Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, I just want to do a couple of, go over a few housekeeping items. First, please take this opportunity to silence your cell phones. Next, if you are interested in speaking to the commission about one of the items listed on the agenda, and you are not one of the applicants, please make sure you complete one of those forms that are located just outside on the desk. If you complete that form, you can bring it up here, and we will only be calling on those people from the audience who have completed that form, again, if you are not one of the applicants. We do ask that you limit your comments to five minutes if you come to address the commission. We further ask that if you have any repetitious comments, if you, excuse me, we further ask that if you have, if you're here with your neighbors, and you all have similar concerns, that you appoint one person to speak on behalf of the neighbors, I don't think that's going to be the case today, and that you try to avoid any repetitious comments. Finally, we just ask that you follow the golden rule, be respectful of each other and to us and to the process. So with that being said, we can move forward with receipt of the minutes from the March 14th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes of the March 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves to receive the minutes for the March 14th, 2024 meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. Sorry, bear with us on technology, but we've got it. The motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests, and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 21, S P U D 1597, request to defer to April 11th. Item 22, Case PC 10898, defer to April 25th. Item 30, or excuse me, 23, Case PC 10913, defer to April 25th. Item 24, Case PC 10904, continue indefinitely. Item 25, PC 10910 has been withdrawn, and item 26, Case PC 010919 has been withdrawn.
Excellent. Is there anyone here who was hoping to be heard on those items? All right, then we're just looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the uncontested continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the uncontested continuance requests as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. There are no new requests, and there are also, there are no items for the consent docket, so we'll begin with items requiring separate vote. And item one, is there an applicant present? Is there an applicant present for C 7634?
My name is Sam Hamani, and we're just asking this five acre of a land, which has been divided into three plots, you know, and is I-2 zone and is, we're trying to build some buildings over there. I can share some informations if you...
Sir, are you here for C 7634?
Yeah, 7634, yes.
Okay.
And these are some of the buildings.
Oh, did we not? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. I apologize. We do need to make sure we've read in the item before we continue. I'm so sorry.
Just for the record, it's C 7634, final plat of Meridian Industrial, located south of Northwest 10th Street and west of North Meridian Avenue.
Yes, so sorry, please continue.
I think it's, I think it's to make it viable concept to be, instead of doing the three different plots, we just decided to be on the one plot and contiguous spaces and things like that.
Okay. Well, this is in Ward Three. Commissioner Meek?
Yeah, and this is just a final plat, so I had spoke with Mr. Hamani back on the original application, unless there's protesters here.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any comments regarding this? If not, I'm ready to make a motion.
You can proceed.
Okay. Make a motion, recommend approval of C 7634.
Commissioner Meek moves to approve of C 7634. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes.
Yeah, subject to the two TEs.
Subject to the two TEs.
Yeah, they're normal.
Is everyone able to vote?
Thank you, thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line with item two.
Item two is Case C 7633, final plat of Deer Run Acres, and this is located north of Northwest 63rd Street and west of Stinchcomb Avenue, with a variance to Section 5.12.2.2B of the subdivision regulations.
Hi, my name's Chris Chamberlain, and I'm the owner and developer of this, and as well as a neighbor. So 10.6 acres of land, going to split into eight residential, roughly 1.3 acre lots. If you know the area, it's farmland, acreages, and this will fit in nicely with the area. Initially turned in a, just a lot split application, after meeting with the city, they asked me if I would plat it to make it a cleaner legal document. That's what we've done, and this is our application for that.
Okay, and I believe there was a change that needed to be added. Am I, Nate?
Yeah, so I think, I believe in the, in the documents, it says that the streets will be dedicated to the city of, city of Oklahoma City?
No, last I spoke, and what we were planning on is just private, so there's a private road that will be up the west side of the property, basically a private drive, and the entry there, it says 63rd Street, but that's, that's currently just a gravel road, so the plan is just to continue that, and then potentially after building, construction, concrete trucks, everything else to go in and then possibly do hard surface on that. But, but all that's in the area right there is, is gravel road, so the plan was just to continue that, and I believe last time I spoke, I don't remember who it was with the city, but that was the plan, and that's what we communicated in our application.
So access to all lots will be via a private drive?
Yes, correct.
In general, oh, go ahead, Barry.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. There, I don't think we really have a problem with what they are proposing on it, but we had a, what looked to me like a conflict between the language that's in the owner's dedication on the plat and some of the staff comments. The, the language in the owner's dedication does say that the streets will be dedicated to the public, and we just need to have that so it's revised and, and the proper notation put on the plat that, that the streets and drives for this plat will be private.
Okay, so then we just need to say that as TE six, yes.
Yeah, if we can have that in there as a TE, just, it may be noted somewhere else in the staff report, I didn't read that in there, but that's just something that we'll have to have changed on that owner's dedication. Doesn't really change anything that he's wanting to do on the development, it's just the language on the plat.
Excellent. Okay.
And so the purpose of the hammerhead there is for, for emergency vehicle access?
Yes. Speaking with someone from the city or Fire Marshal's Office, they requested a turnaround at the end of the road. I actually work for the Fire Department, so I'm very familiar with this issue. Many city streets don't have it, but the, the most economical and efficient way to do this was to do the hammerhead there at the end, so there will be a turnaround for fire apparatus, trash trucks, any other large vehicles to give them adequate turnaround at the end of that.
Any questions from commissioners? I have to make a comment because I just am compelled. This is exactly one of those places where we're gonna, we're gonna approve this most likely, I'm assuming, and then you're gonna end up developing lots to the west, and we're gonna have these people who buy these lots come back to us and tell us, we were told we were never gonna turn this open field on the west of this, it's never gonna be developed, and then it is. So I hope you're not telling anybody who you're selling these lots to that those, that the vacant lot to the west is not gonna become something, because at some point, it will.
I, I'm perfectly, yeah, so a lot, that's a lot of people's questions, because I have lots of interested people, and I tell them I have no idea what's gonna happen in the future, and I leave it at that. I have no control, no idea what their plans are, and so people are well aware that, you know, that could be hundreds of houses one day, and hopefully it could be acreages one day, you know, but right now it's farmland, and everybody, everybody likes it that way, so.
Oh, they do, for now.
They're very, they're very aware, you know, so.
So if I'm still on the commission years from now, I just, just remember this. Okay, I think we're looking for a motion at this point, Commissioner Claire.
Yeah, the variance first. Do you have a variance?
You know, I, I guess I'm just, I feel compelled to say, I don't know why we would want to do this. You know, this area is definitely gonna be developed someday, if it's capable of being developed, and, you know, why, why would we put eight properties in here with, you know, gravel driveway for access? I, I don't get it. Why would we be in favor of that?
Well, it's, the gravel, the gravel is, is Northwest 63rd Street, right? Because we're gonna build, they're gonna build a street to access the actual neighborhood.
Right, so the actual road we're putting in is a private drive going north, which is currently wheat field, but the access in, right, the paving actually stops at 63rd and Stinchcomb. All west of that is gravel road.
I see.
And that, that map isn't super accurate, there's currently five new houses that just went in, just to the east of your pointer right there. Those are all acreages.
Oh, okay.
So there's five people right there on acre, acreages, these will be acreages, and everybody in the area, if you see what's happening across the street, there's hundreds and hundreds of lots going in over here. People and neighbors are thrilled about this proposal, as opposed to that, just because it fits the area, and it gives people, they're very desirable, the people are fine with gravel, they're just happy to be in town and have a nice yard and raise their kids, so.
So I was under the impression it was more on an island than it actually is, based on them developing the lots on Stinchcomb.
Yeah, so these will match and be very similar to those in size.
And then is that, that's another residence further west, right? That right there, that the curse is on?
Just to the east, yeah, that's, they've got a five acre tract, tract of land, and then there's another five acres to the north of them that I don't know what that gentleman's plan is, so.
Yeah, it seems like it's just a continuation of the development, though, on larger acreages. Any other comments, commissioners? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the variance to Section 5.12.2.2B of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the variance to Section 5.12.2.2B of the subdivision regulations. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Claire?
Move to approve item C 7633, subject to the technical evaluations, and adding technical evaluation six, that says access to all lots shall be a private, be via, via a private drive, and that the owner's dedication on the plat shall be revised to reflect that.
Is that good? Okay. Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C 76, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record, excuse me, C 7633, subject to the technical evaluation amendments as read into the record. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Good luck.
Appreciate your time.
We're in line for item three.
Item three is P U D 1715-SP10, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of P U D 1715, located at 5101 North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a specific plan for the hotel component of The Oak. If you've driven by there, you've seen The Oak is topped out, they're now doing the exterior finish. This is simply the branding signage that at the time that we got the specific plan for the hotel itself, we weren't ready for. So this is the last piece of it. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Powers?
This is all in accordance with the plan for this property, so I'm, I don't really have any questions or issues with it.
Excellent. Looks cool. Any questions from commissioners? All right.
Not, I'll move approval for item number three, P U D 1517 SP10.
Commissioner, Commissioner Powers moves to recommend a city council approval of the SP10 for P U D 1715. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item four.
Item four is Case CE 1119, application to close a 20-foot north-south public utility easement within Shadow Lake Village, Section 7, located west of South Pennsylvania Avenue and north of southwest 104th Street.
Hello, Clint Morris, with Civil and Environmental Consultants. This is just to vacate an easement on an existing sewer line that we are relocating as a part of the development to get it out from underneath proposed homes.
Commissioner Privet, excuse me, Commissioner Newman, sorry.
I talked with the applicant, it sounds fairly straightforward, they're basically relocating a sewer line as they build the subdivision, so unless there's anyone here to speak, I'd like to make a motion.
It doesn't look like, Dustin didn't instantly jump up, so I'm assuming there's no objections from utilities, so then I think we're just looking for a motion.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve CE 1119, including the TE number one, for approval.
Commissioner Newman moves to approve, excuse me, to recommend approval of CE 1119, subject to the one technical evaluation. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. Okay, there we go, okay, and the motion passes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. We're in line for item five.
This is CE 1120, application to close a portion of the east-west alley within Block Five of the Iowa addition, east of South High Avenue and north of southeast 15th Street.
Hello, good, good afternoon. My name is Shizam Chima, and I'm here to see if you have any question.
This is pretty straightforward, this is in my ward. We were here, we just rezoned this area, you might recall, last meeting, I think, to commercial, and so this is again going to allow for this development to occur, and I am in full support. Are there any questions? Any questions from commissioners? I cannot make the motion to approve.
I want to confirm that the applicant is aware, is aware of the technical evaluation, he'll provide a topographic survey on the location of all utilities and dimensions within the proposed closure prior to this going to city council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. With that, then I will move to recommend approval of item CE 1120, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend a city council approval of CE 1120, subject to the technical evaluations. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Good luck. We're in line for item six.
Item six is S P U D 1607, application to rezone 11769 North Morgan Road from P U D 1872.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel, One East Sheridan Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. We do apologize for the lateness of this request, but we would like to defer this item four weeks. We're gonna shift it over in the, in the industrial subdivision and renotice it, based on a conversation we had with the abutting property owner.
Sounds good. So you want the 25th of April?
Yes.
Then, yeah, works for, works for me.
Anyone here to speak on this?
Oh, no one has signed up to speak. Does anyone have anything to say about it?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to defer this item to the April 25th meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves to continue S P U D 1607 to the April 25th meeting of the Planning Commission. Looking for a second, at least on my screen. Are we really anxious to hear this case, everyone? Okay. There we go, okay. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, again, for clarity, continuing S P U D 1607 to the April 25th meeting of the Planning Commission. Please cast your votes. And it passes, we'll see you again on the 25th. We're now in line for item seven.
This is S P U D 1610, application to rezone 1140 Southwest 104th Street from S P U D 298.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel, Johnson Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue. Before you use the case, you saw earlier this year, we were proposing a laundromat, a new user has come in, it's a day spa tanning type of use, so we have, we withdrew the previous S P U D, filed this new one, it's almost identical to what you had previously recommended approval for, with the exception of the laundromat use was removed, the day spa was included. So happy to answer any questions, otherwise, we ask for your recommendation of approval.
Excellent. Commissioner Newman?
I talked with the applicant, this seems like a much more appropriate use for that location. I don't really have any issues with it. Do we have anyone signed up?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Are there any, any other commissioners have any comments? Okay, I'm gonna recommend approval of S P U D 1610. Make a motion to approve that, or recommend approval?
Commissioner Newman moves to recommend to city council approval of S P U D 1610. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item eight.
This is S P U D 1611, application to rezone 8,000 South Shields Boulevard from I-1.
Hello, we brought this, what, Dakota Desai 100 Northeast 5th Street, on behalf of the applicant. We brought this before you guys last month as a straight rezone. After your recommendation, we went back and did an S P U D, so it keeps the base zone at I-1 and just allows for used auto sales.
Gotcha, and then I think we wanted some, we wanted to do some mitigation for any harm that might occur to the people who are, the residences to the north and to the south, and so I think we created some buffer, 15 feet landscape buffer, and then I don't know what else was done besides that offhand, to, was that what, the primary thing that we did to mitigate those issues besides the downzoning?
That, and also most of the concern, I believe, was it going to I-2 and being heavier industrial uses in the future, so we just kept it at I-1.
Cool. I like it.
Yep, and my ward, I now have no issues, I think we took care of the R1s, and, yeah, I'm good with it. We have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
Okay, I can move to recommend approval of S P U D 1611.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend a city council approval of S P U D 1611. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item nine.
Item nine is S P U D 1612, application to rezone 3121 Northwest 20th Street from R1 and UC, Overly District.
Hello, good afternoon, Chris Gold, I'm the property owner for this lot, and submitted this, I have an existing structure in the back of my property, it's not a garage at the time, it's just an existing structure. I have parents that are recently retiring, I'm looking to move them closer to home to help take care of them. The square footage of the structure right now is too small, it's already got electric, it's got water running to it, it just doesn't have sewers, so it's not a living space. So my understanding was to rezone, look, to rezone this lot to allow a living structure there to move my parents in.
Great. Just so that I could have asked the question officially, if we were, the proposed, or potentially proposed, change to our ordinances to allow for accessory dwelling units, how would this square with those?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, we met with the applicant prior, and the S P U D was designed to comply with it, they just, their timeline is more urgent than, than we can promise.
Cool. All right. Commissioner Goveen?
Sure, yeah, I've reviewed the case. It allows one A D U to replace existing structure, as noted, site's limited to two buildings total, there are no TEs or issues from staff, 24-foot height limit, so I'm in support, and unless there's anyone else wanting to speak or protest, I'll move approval.
No one signed up to speak? Okay, in that case, I'll... It looks like there's no questions from commissioners.
Yeah. I'm gonna jump the gun, I will move to recommend approval of S P U D 1612.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend city council approval of S P U D 1612. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Good luck. We're in line for item 10.
Item 10 is S P U D 1609, application to rezone 1709 Northwest 14th Street from R2.
My name is Ray Razavi, I'm the, I'm basically owner of 1211 Ventures, we did S P U D next door to the east, S P U D 1390. We plan on doing, pretty much continuing same development, and I believe the staff note was maximum to two structures before the S P U D, and I'll ask, answer any question you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Goveen?
Sure. So the, the one thing I wanted to clarify was, are you proposing two structures or one duplex? It was a little unclear in the application, so I just wanted...
It's either or, it was just, we're basically kind of like noticing between the setbacks what we're gonna end up with, so we're thinking, we'd like to do two individual structure, or, or if we have to connect them together, we're cool with that, too, so.
Okay. I think, and I, I've been by the side, there's a number of duplexes on this road to the west, I think.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I don't think that that's an issue, if that's what you did want to do, I like, I like... I like, I like the two single families. The one thing I would want to clean up, sorry, that mic's a little loud, is you have an internal setback of zero, which, if the two, if the lot, if you have a duplex, your lot line would be on the party wall, presumably. Or, I just wanted to, we've got a three-foot setback side yard, and then we also have an internal of zero. So if it's two structures, I wanted to make sure that we end up with that six foot between the two structures.
That's actually what we proposed for the setbacks between the buildings. It was set to be zero, but we plan on doing six foot total, so 3-3.
Okay, I think, I think the interpretation then is, if there's two structures, the side yard setback of three feet applies. If it's one, then the zero is okay as a duplex. So in that case, I don't think that's a problem. There is a TE of specify a maximum of two dwelling units within the SPUD. You're okay with that?
Yeah, we're okay with that.
Okay.
Specify the issue with respect to?
Sounds like no, as long as we list internal at zero.
I think as long as they're both, one would be not applicable if it's not built that way. So I don't think it needs to be amended as a TE.
I think we put it under maximum number of building up to two structures.
Yeah, and that's already in here, too, as well. So in fact, the TE's not really required on that one.
Sarah, do you want to provide any insight on that? Because it seems to me like, since we're allowing both, the possibility of both with the descriptions, with the setback description, we're good either way. Is that true?
If the question's about the setbacks, then yes. If they build a duplex, then that's obviously a zero setback between. Otherwise, it's three, three feet on each side if it's one structure per lot.
Gotcha. So unless we're going to acquire them today to be either two lots, or, you know, two buildings or one, then this is sufficient.
Our TE was because, our interpretation was that you could, the way it's written today, you could put two duplexes on each lot. And so our TE is saying, one, either two, single family or one duplex.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Because you're saying a maximum of two dwelling units within the SPUD, and the SPUD is two lots. So that means one on each. So we will keep that TE.
Sounds good.
Anyone else have other questions?
I think we're ready.
I will move to approve SPUD 1609 with the one TE of specify a maximum number of two dwelling units within the SPUD.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend to City Council approval of SPUD 1609, subject to the technical evaluation. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thanks, guys. Good luck. We're in line for item 11.
Item 11 is SPUD 1598, application to rezone 929 Southwest 88th Street, from SPUD 1441.
Hi, I'm Aaron Evans with A&amp;A Development.
Excellent. Would you like to tell us about your project?
It's a multi-family.
You can move the mic up. I know you're a tall person, but, yeah.
It's 15, 15 lots for multi-family development.
Okay. Commissioner Newman?
I've met with the applicant, and are there any protests?
No, we have no one signed up.
No one's signed up, okay. I met with the applicant. We, I did have a few issues with that. We worked through four TEs to address those, that we have agreed to, which are the four things that we went over. Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read those, just so everybody here on the commission will know what we've agreed to, and then if they have questions, you guys can follow up. Starting with the side yard, we're deleting the existing language that's in the SPUD and changing it to side yard setback of five feet or three feet where allowed by current adopted building code. On dumpsters, at the end of the dumpster section, we've added, dumpster shall be screened and at least 20 feet from any occupied structure, and dumpsters shall be no further than 350 feet from each dwelling unit via public route.
20 feet from?
Dumpster shall be screened and be at least 20 feet from any occupied structure.
Okay.
And I'll reread them at the end. Under parking, we are going to strike one space per dwelling unit and revise it to say 1.25 spaces per dwelling units, and no parking reduction shall be allowed. At the very end of parking, we're going to add, all on and off-street parking spaces shall conform to minimum size standards outlined in Tables 5 and 6 in Section 59-10-600 of the municipal code. On-street parking shall not infringe upon fire department access requirements. So that's what we've agreed to at this point in time.
So three, three?
Two, three, yes.
Okay.
There's, there's two, two changes to the parking, so.
Gotcha, so they're separate. So the use of the phrase occupied structure, do we want to clarify that, what that means? Do we want to just say from the, from the residences? Or are we, I'm looking at staff to make sure that that's adequate, that that, the use of that phrase. I don't know if that phrase has any definition. That's what worries me, is we say that, and then there's no definition for the phrase.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, I'm thinking maybe residential structure, because whether someone lives there or not would be too hard to determine.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? I do have a question about, so help me understand, just because I've never driven this site. There is a home to the west of whatever the street name is. And I've lost my screen. There's a, there's another residence on the west side, right? West of your property? That?
Yes.
And how do they get, is their driveway what's connecting to 88th? Is that what that is? Or is that, is that a continuation of the same street?
Yes, they're using Klein, basically, as their driveway. It's an unapproved street.
Gotcha. Okay. And so how does your development impact their ability to access their home? I guess it doesn't.
No, he's extending Klein.
He is extending Klein. Okay, that was what I was trying to understand.
He's extending Klein and then adding the new Southwest 88 terrace. Which is the one with the cul-de-sac.
Gotcha. Okay. And so it, so this does not interfere with the ability further north of your property? They'll still be able to easily access it, I guess?
They could extend, there's nothing to the north currently, but Klein could be extended further north.
Okay. Okay. Just curious. Any other questions, commissioners? I think we're just ready for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of SPUD 1598, including the following TEs. TE1, side yard setback shall be changed to, side yard setback shall be five feet or three feet where allowed by current adopted building code. TE2, at the end of the section on dumpsters, add dumpsters shall be screened and be at least 20 feet from any residential structure. A dumpster shall be no, no further than 350 feet from any dwelling unit entry via public routes. TE3, under the parking section, strike one space per dwelling unit and change it to 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit, and no parking reduction shall be allowed. TE4 is add, at the end of the parking section, all on and off-street parking spaces shall conform to minimum standards outlined in Tables 5 and 6 in Section 59-10-600 of the municipal code. On-street parking shall not infringe upon fire department access requirements.
Can I ask, I'm sorry?
Please.
Why are there dumpsters, exactly?
Because it's, they're intending on fourplex units and sixplex units.
Commissioner Newman moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1598 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations, as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 12.
Item 12 is Case PC 10926, application to rezone 4112 North Lindsay Avenue, from R1 to O2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The application's for an O2. It is consistent with the surrounding area. The staff report does note that O2, under its base zoning, does have appropriate mitigation measures required under the bulk standards where adjacent to R1, which we are adjacent to on the north and that kind of northeast notch. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Where's Kaitlyn?
What's that?
Where's Kaitlyn?
She's at the Oklahoma County Board of Adjustment, having all the fun.
Oh, we're more fun than the Board of Adjustments?
You're stuck with me.
Yeah. You can tell her we asked.
She's probably watching.
So I think, this is in my ward, I think one of the things to remember as we're looking at this, commissioners, is that there's still a lot of office development that occurs to just east, a block from Lincoln. Obviously, Lincoln has a lot of office and other commercial uses, but there's a lot of, of office development that continues to occur on that other side to the, to the west, excuse me, to the east on Lindsay. My initial concern was about the residences to the north, so that was why I asked, I've asked David about what mitigation measures are there when O2 is adjacent to residential? And I believe that was, it's going to be a requirement of one?
Within 35 feet, it's one-story or 20 feet tall. There's also setbacks and landscaping that are baked into the bulk standards.
There you go. So that was the concern. That's an appropriate distance. Obviously, to the south is another, that's another, another commercial building, so looks like office, some SPUDs, so not worried about that side. So I'm in support of this. Are there any other questions? And I think we're just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item PC 10926.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10926 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. He recused, sorry. Excellent. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 13.
This is Case PC 10927, application to rezone 1301 Northeast 30th Street, from R1 and Healthy Neighborhoods Overlay to R4 and Healthy Neighborhoods Overlay.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel, with Johnson &amp; Associates, addresses One East Sheridan Avenue. Before we use a straight rezone application to R4, there are no TEs and staff recommends approval. Been several conversations around this, around this property. We've received no phone calls. I don't believe the staff has received any letters of protest. While we are seeking R4, Sheriff, if you can go back to the zoning map. You can see everything around us is owned R1. That puts restrictions on the height that we can construct on this property. So in addition to landscape buffers, we're restricted to one-story and 20 feet within 35 feet of the property, and then from there, it's measured on a 45-degree bulk plane. And so our ability to get any substantial height or density is going to be restricted on this property because of the base zoning district. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mark. Again, my number one concern is, Commissioner Powers and I both met with Mark about this, was, again, what the standards would require with R4 directly next to R1. This is a heavily, it's historically been a heavily wooded area, where there's not really much around it. I think there's only one, there's those two structures that are, that are close. But again, because of the limitations that are already in the code, it's, and the wooded area that surrounds those homes, I'm not really concerned. I would say that a concern of mine may be, while we haven't heard from neighbors now, we may hear from them later, as this is a pretty drastic change from being a wooded area for as long as I can remember, to being a potential higher-dense area. I am encouraged by seeing more density in Ward 7. I am also happy that across the street, we're building some single-family homes, and that's underway as we speak. So I think that's great. I'm also a proud graduate of Northeast Academy, and I just like to point that out. So as far as I know, it has not been anything, so glad to see some more development happening. I'm in full support, and happy to take any questions, commissioners. Okay, just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of item PC 10927.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend to City Council approval of PC 10927. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are in line for item 13. 14, sorry.
Item 14 is Case PUD 1997, application to rezone 2829 South MacArthur Boulevard, from I-2.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The purpose of the PUD is to allow the horse auction facility that's been existence for decades to continue to operate. My client went and pulled permit to expand the operation, and were told you're not zoned correctly, which of course came as a massive surprise to them, considering that they've been in existence and operating for many decades. So here we are, asking for your approval. No compatibility issues have been identified by staff, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Meek?
Spoke with the applicant. I'm good with everything. Agree with what his comments were, and if there's no comments, I'm ready to recommend approval.
I think Barry might have had a few things, Ray.
Very large, public works, just a couple of real minor things. I did speak with Kaitlyn in David's office, day before yesterday, concerning a couple of statements in the PUD language, specifically the one that, that says, what starts out with the drains will comply with Chapter 16. Good with that. The next statement says that a fee in lieu of detention will, or shall be permitted for this property, and we want to have that taken out, what there's provision within Chapter 16 for the applicant to turn in an application and request for the fee in lieu of detention, but we don't want to have that language in there that says it shall be permitted, because they will have to meet the requirements for the fee in lieu of detention. And then the second one was, just says sidewalks shall not be required. We'd like to have that modified. It says sidewalks, if required, will be in accordance with the applicable sections of the ordinance. So very minor changes, but kind of clarifies some of the language.
Okay.
So we're fine with the fee in lieu, we understand that's a process we'll have to go through. In terms of the sidewalks, it is my belief that horses tend to not use sidewalks, and there's, there's really a whole lot of nothing around there. I don't think there are any sidewalks around there. Perhaps I'm wrong. Our preference would be not to do sidewalks.
Is, are there going to be substantial development or additional structures built? Or is this just kind of the cleanup?
So there will be additional barns behind the main structure. If you look at Google Earth, Google Earth, this, this one doesn't reflect it, but the Google Earth image actually shows two temporary tents, in essence, that have been set up, that they've been operating out of. These structures will just be permanent in the same location as those tents, those tents have been. Nothing about the, the use, the operation or anything is changing. It's just going from temporary tents to permanent barns.
And they're roof-only, correct?
I'm sorry?
They're roof-only?
Correct.
Yes.
I'm a little, I'm a little unsure about that. I mean, I see development. Is this a trailer park? I mean, there's, there are things around there. And what do I do if I'm on my way to buy the horse? I don't have the horse yet. I'm, I'm trying to walk to the place to get the horse. I might need a sidewalk.
This may surprise you, but I'm not a big horse guy. But I am of the belief that no one walks to a horse auction intending to ride their horse out of the auction.
I mean, I'm just saying.
It is my firm belief that people drive large trucks with a trailer in back to put the horse in. But I'm going to let the expert explain. put the horse in, but I'm going to let the expert explain how people buy their horses.
Hi, councilmen and women. Thank you. My name is Jeff Tebow. I'm the Chief Executive Officer, Heritage Place. A little history about Heritage Place. We held our first auction in 1978. We are the largest quarter horse sale facility in North America. The economic impact that we have on Oklahoma City is in the tens of millions every year. We have people from approximately 25 or 30 states around the country, as well as foreign countries that attend our sales every year. I think, as David had said, what to much of our surprise because of the demand for the products and the number of people wanting to visit our state, in the past, we had the ability to hold approximately 650 horses in this almost five-acre facility. In the past, we've had to go and rent tents, if you will, and put the tents on the property and have portable stalls put in the tents to meet the demand. What we're trying to do is put a covered arena, if you will, that will not have any sides on it, that we will be able to continue to support our operation. Once we've made all these applications and got all the way to what we thought was going to be the final permit to allow us to proceed, we were informed that we were not zoned correctly. Now, I don't know if Zone I3 was even around in 1978, but we've continued to do the same thing, and we hold three auctions a year, and with your support in approving this PUD, it would allow us to continue to do what we do. Now, in reference to sidewalks, there are a few sidewalks around the buildings in the front. We certainly wanted a safe environment when our patrons and customers show up, but where the structures, the structures will be built will be in the back of the property. And so I think you are correct, David. Typically, you know, trying to keep a horse on a three-foot sidewalk sometimes can be challenging, so. But I did want to come up and explain to you a little bit about Heritage Place and what we do and what we've done for this community for close to 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. It sounds like there are, the planning director was sharing, maybe you can share with everyone.
Yes, there, so MacArthur's a four-lane with no sidewalks. There appears to be a widening project on southwest 29th Street. I'm not sure, Barry, if you know if that's going to include sidewalks or not. I don't, I don't know that it would.
So is that advocating for the fee-in lieu option here?
Yeah, different issue. I mean, and I accept what the applicant said about the facility may not need or have any real reason for sidewalks. The only reason I bring it up is this PUD, or this PUD stays with this property, and we're giving perpetual exception to never have sidewalks, and as this area evolves.
What if we had a change of use? If the use changes, sidewalks would be required.
I mean, I could see something like that. That's what I'm trying to address, is that if something changes.
And that's primarily where it comes from. I'm not, I'm not real concerned with sidewalks around the horse barns.
Right.
That's the interior stuff. I'm more concerned with the arterial streets.
Right.
And, and having that, having the statement in there that sidewalks will be provided in accordance with that chapter of the municipal code keeps it consistent with the municipal code. We're not trying to vary something with that. Obviously, that's where the, if required comes in, it's going to be the use changes, they add some additional buildings, do some additional structures, then that may prompt that requirement for sidewalks. And that's what we're looking at. Again, we're not, we're not trying to say we need to have sidewalks around the horse barns.
I'm good with that.
Good with what? Well, what are we saying? Is it in the event of?
I would, I would suggest that it's if required in the event of additional development or change of use.
I mean, I don't want to say additional development.
They're getting rid of the structures.
A change of use. The top, you know, the sideless barn were considered, but change of use or redevelopment of the site in a manner inconsistent with horse auction.
Mr. Chair, if I may, maybe we're getting there, but in addition to whether, you know, only if it was going to change the use, but to me, I may be outside the box here, but Maps 3, we paid for sidewalks. We try to recruit businesses here, but for current, really good businesses in this town, I've been out there before, it's great. We've got to do something to encourage them to stay here, and if there weren't sidewalks before, if this is just a technicality, they weren't zoned, I don't want to make them put in sidewalks. I like if the use changes, maybe then it has to, but I don't want to be abusive to a really good current business already in town.
I, this is my ward, and I agree with Commissioner La Forge. This was missed when they built the original building. They're trying to do a cleanup on this, and I don't believe now is the time to put sidewalks on all their, yeah, on all their main thoroughfares. If, if there's nothing else regarding any other issues with the two changes that have been brought up regarding the fee in lieu of, and I would say on item 16, just removing the wording that says sidewalk shall not be required within this PUD, and leaving the wording that if required, because they're not going to be required now.
Well, I think that what they're saying is that they will be required if we don't address it in the PUD. What I think would happen is when we go pull the permit to go build that sideless structure, planner review is going to say, where are your sidewalks? And so if we have to address it in the PUD to get there.
Yeah, that's...
We're fine with going through the fee-in lieu process on the stormwater.
Right.
Engineering will have to deal with that, but we want sidewalks to not be required.
Okay, so leave 16, item 16 as it is, leaving sidewalk shall not be required.
Yeah.
Unless there is a change of...
Unless there's a change of use.
Change of use, or...
And the, the change of use specifically tied to the horse auction, or however you want to word it.
If it's no longer...
I mean, it has all the other I2 uses.
Correct, sure. So if someone goes and pulls, you know, a change of use permit or a building permit for a use other than the horse, you know, animal auctioning, then that would be the trigger for a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I think it is. I don't remember, after a primary structure's been built, a secondary structure triggering main thoroughfare sidewalk requirements.
Well, since it's been rezoned, right?
Okay, that's what's the difference. Because now it's a PUD instead of just standard I2. I got it. All right. But I, I mean, I think that's, that's really all I was bringing up the point, is that things change over time, and so let's allow this. We don't want, we're not trying to say someone, he needs to build sidewalks for the current horse auction use.
Yeah.
Tie it to that in the TE.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? I think we all agree. We just need to make sure we have the right wording for the TE, so. Commissioner Meek, you want to give it a, give it a try?
I'll give it a try. I'm going to recommend, recommend approval of PUD 1997 with a TE that changes item 15 to remove the fee in lieu of being automatically permitted.
And we need to add something about that?
And adding the sidewalks shall not be required unless there is a change of use
Okay.
For the property.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, yes. I mean, maybe more specifically, a change of use in which the horse auction is no longer operational on the site.
Is the specificity of that sufficient for the record?
Change of use from animal auctioning. Yeah, animals.
Just want to make sure it's clear for the record.
Or if it's used any other than the animal auction site.
Yes.
It is, it's clear for the record. It's very specific.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it might be too specific. Okay.
Okay. All right.
And I may try to walk out there and buy a horse. We'll see what happens.
Can you please record that so we can...
Only if I'm wearing this suit, though.
Okay. Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of PUD 1997 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you. We are in line for item 15.
Item 15 is PUD 1998, application to rezone 8321 West Britton Road from C3.
David Jones with the Arride Group, 2201 Wood Hill Road in Edmond. Here representing the Britton Road Properties Group, who is looking to rezone attractive land, about 4.32 acres on the north side of Britton Road, it's kind of bracketed in by council and Northwest Expressway area. And I think staff's comments are, make it pretty clear what our goal here is, is we're looking to modify the base C3 zoning to a PUD to allow for a mixed-use development for office and commercial, and including some limited light industrial uses. We've had some conversations with the planning department on some of the specific uses that are cited within the master design statement, and modified those and eliminated some of those. So in short, that's the gist of the project.
All right. This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire?
I don't have any questions, so.
I wondered about the separation of the two drives, the curb cuts. Does that have to be 200 feet between those two? I think it said 140.
Yes, our Welch Planning Department, it normally is 200, but because of their service drive for the...
Cell tower?
Cell tower, okay. They won't be able to have, they won't be able to make the 200-foot separation to have both drives.
Okay.
For their project.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak.
I guess the only, the only thing I have is, since we're talking about drives, is it looks to me like we're really close on the westernmost drive, being able to get that to a line across the street.
I understand, yeah. I do.
So I just, when, during final...
From a turning movement standpoint, you know, it would be best if they did perfectly align, but I think with the minimal offset that we have, that the turning movements from both sides would not be impacted significantly in the sense of them not being able to see the vehicle across from them coming directly into their line.
Let's say, just in an ideal world, it'd be great if those could align, but I can, but it's, it's very minor.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is a minor difference, but I, to the point, you can see the other vehicles clearly, so. Unless staff has any other comments on that. Any other questions, commissioners? I think we're ready. Commissioner Claire?
I'll move to recommend approval of City Council of PUD 1998.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend to City Council approval of PUD 1998. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 16.
Item 16 is KC 7636, preliminary plat of Arcady, located south of east Memorial Road and east of northwest Midwest Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Serra Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat of, there's a recently approved PUD on it. We, I agree with TEs 1, 2, 3, and 4. I would request that TE number 5 be reworded to say, the limits of no access must be provided along Memorial Road on the final plats, except on the lots that are allowed to take access from Memorial Road and meet the requirements of the specified PUD 1950, which I discussed with staff earlier, and they were good with that.
Barry?
I didn't discuss with engineering staff.
Berry Lodge Public Works. We had a conversation with Richard McCubbin in our pre-meeting about the access on this particular project, the limits of no access, Memorial Road being 55 miles an hour speed limit. That's going to prompt some of the concern over the access of the particular drives. PUD does allow driveways that meet certain requirements, and Richard did concede that, you know, we'd be okay with that. The other issue that came up in that meeting was where the road access into the development would need to have sight distance checked because of the, it's, again, the 55 mile an hour speed limit, and I think Richard said it was an 800-foot sight distance requirement that could be an issue from the, from the traffic on the east. So that's going to be part of the problem. The other issue along, what is that, Midwest Boulevard, is where it's at, I think it's Lot 16 down in the southwest corner, that particular lot is right at that bridge that comes under the turnpike, and that bridge is going to severely limit the sight distance coming out of that lot. So as far as the, on the north lot, where that lot doesn't have enough room really to take access off of Memorial Road, that'd be more acceptable to have the limit, limits of no access relaxed a bit so that that lot can take access to Midwest Boulevard, but I think we need to have it extended on the southwest corner because of the restricted sight distance because of the bridge.
So Barry...
I mean, I would agree with that, because Track 2 is, and the PUD is required to take access from an interior street anyway, and that's in Track 2 of the PUD.
Okay.
So really, we show the limits of no access along Memorial to stop right there, but that's because separation requirements required from the intersection, but we would like, and it's not wide enough on Memorial, so we would like to allow for it on Midwest. So that's the intent of me asking for that modification. Track 2, which is the one-acre lots, is required to take access from an interior street anyway.
Gotcha, so...
I can, I'm happy to show limits of no access down there on that, along Track 2.
But as far, I'm first concerned about the wording. So as Mark just shared, with the changes to TE 5, where are you on that, Barry?
I think we're okay with that, as discussed in, in the, in the pre-meeting. The real preference would be to have limits of no access all along Memorial Road, but as we also discussed, there's some provisions made in the, in the PUD approval for that, and so we're not going to try to go back on that, but we do want to restrict it. There will be a restriction on the limits of no access along Midwest Boulevard, even on that northwest corner because of where the, in the proximity of the intersection. But with that lot line, I think that, that lot line on that side was 430-some-odd feet with, and I believe the limits of no access was shown at about 175, if I remember the number right. We're okay with that, and then showing the limits of no access on the southwest corner, whatever that lot number is, then, you know, we'd be good with that.
And then we'll complete the necessary site studies on any public access to Memorial as well, which will have to be done at final plat stage anyway.
Right, so we don't need to put that, we don't need to include that.
That's going to be an engineering requirement that, that traffic is, will catch. I think it's just something that, that Richard wanted to get into the record so that there wouldn't be any question, that it would be required prior to any final plat approvals.
Okay.
That's typical.
Yep.
All right. Well, I've spent a significant portion of my life, in the last year, talking about PU, PUD 1950, so I would love for this to be the very end, but I guess this is the preliminary plat, so I've got one more time to hear about, hear about this.
Barry, I had one question. On the width of the driveways that will come out on Memorial, is there a minimum?
I think it's pretty specific in the PUD of the requirement for those driveways. They have to be concrete. I think they have to be a certain width. I mean...
Has the lots had to be a certain size before you could even...
250 foot wide.
Off Memorial.
I just want to mail two cars to pass in the drive.
Yeah, for this, for this type of residential driveway, I don't think our subdivision regulations contain anything that specify that width. Now, you know, we get into more of a conventional residential development, and we do have widths that have been noted, but probably the language that Mark's referencing in the PUD would, would govern that.
The PUD is specific on that.
Okay. I'm okay with the, with the changes that, with Barry's blessing, okay with the changes that Mark recommends on TE 5.
Do we need to amend that to basically specify that the limits of no access on Midwest Boulevard occur for the 175-foot northernmost property and the 480-foot southernmost?
Yes.
And the limits of the, and the limits of Track 2 of the PUD, which is clear on that?
As well as limits of Track 2.
Yeah. Sounds like you're the one preparing to make this motion, Commissioner Claire, which I'm very happy about. Are there any other questions from commissioners? I think we're ready to go.
All right. I'll move to recommend approval, move to approve item C 7636, subject to the technical evaluations and amending TE five, that limits of no access along Midwest Boulevard shall include the 175-foot northernmost of the property and 480-foot of the southernmost property line, and include the, the limits of track two.
What's the 480?
It's the two southernmost parcels. It's, it's basically the inset area.
Can you pull your, Jared, can you pull that exhibit back up? Okay. So, track two is, there is the one acre lots on the southern portion, that is track two, and that's where we want to make sure that we're, so that 200, that last lot down there, that's like lot 16, right there, that's track two.
So, it includes...
And near 480, are you specifying all the way to there?
Yeah, it's to the notch.
Okay. I think I'm okay with that. You good with that? We're good with that.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C 7636, subject to the amended, subject to the technical evaluations, including an amendment to TE five as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And we are now in line for item 17.
Item 17 is KC 7637, preliminary plat of Rose Rock located east of North Mustang Road and south of Northwest 164th Street.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sierra Road, on behalf of the application. This is a preliminary plat of a recently approved PUD that was approved by this commission. The, I agree with TE's one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. I would request that TE three be stricken. The use, the end user of this is, desires to develop two different products and that the two, the east and the west side not be connected. I know subregs require stubs to section lines, but they don't require interior connection. The, there is a, the place that we also separated those, there's a drainage channel that comes down through there, so it was a good spot to separate that. The, each side meets the access requirements of the subdivision regulations, and because it's not a requirement of subdivision regulations, because of the desires of the end user and because of the conditions of the property, I would, we would respectfully request that that TE be stricken. We do agree with the remainder of the TE's.
What's the difference in the product on the east side versus the west?
Two different lines, not lot sizes, just two different lines, you know, upper scale, lower scale. They may even, they, they've even mentioned the fact that they may want to gate the west side and go private there, so, and if they, if for some reason they ended up doing the same product, I would come back and definitely connect those on the final plat, but because of the desire, and I wanted, I mean, if I come back with a final plat and connect the two sides, no big deal. If I decide that I come back on a final plat and I don't connect the two sides, it's different in the, from the preliminary to the final plat. So, coming forward with the preliminary plat, not showing that connection so that it can be discussed if necessary.
I think we were also discussing the possibility of, of a pedestrian connection at the very least.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would prefer the street connection, but at, at the very least, I mean, it is not, it's not, I think it's preferred that any, you know, pedestrians in that neighborhood, if they're walking to, you know, friend's house in the adjacent neighborhood, that you don't force them out onto Mustang and 164th in order to get over to that house. So, I, I would like to see the street connections, at the very least, pedestrian connections.
It's currently proposed, so...
So that I can follow you guys, where are y'all talking about? Because I'm, I hate to interrupt, but I just want to know where you're talking about.
At the northwest corner of the PUD.
Do you see that detention drainage area there? There's, yeah, both sides are not connected there.
Got it. Thank you.
But we have two, we have connection to the north, connection to the west, and then the other side is, has the required access points to the arterial there, but not interconnected because of the two different product lines that they're, they desire to do there. I, I could agree to the pedestrian connection. If it was gated, then there would just be, you know, an opening there for pedestrian connection, so I'm fine with that. If it's developed this way, they would, we would do two totally separate common areas anyway with two playgrounds, you know, that would, which, all those amenities will come in with the final plat as well, so.
Any reason in kind of that southernmost area? I mean, I could see, you know, that southwest area that developing as residential as well, whether no street stubs to that or to the, to the east?
Well, to the east, Green Hill, I believe it is, does not have any stubs. There's a large, as far as going to the east, there is a large overhead electric line and a large common area that is platted along, isn't that the name of it, Green Hill? And that's our, that's an existing preliminary plat, and a current final plat is in process there. There's no stubs to our east property line, so that's the reason we didn't show any there. I've been made aware of a request for a, that just came in last minute for actually a stub, a stub to the south, which I believe JNA is going to get up and speak to here in just a second. If, I don't, I don't have a problem with that as long as it's, if, you know, I want to do it on the east side, though. I wouldn't want to do it on the west side of it. So, if we did the stub to the south, I assume you're talking about the south portion of the west port?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we could provide a stub to that. I think it's a 20-acre piece right there.
You're talking about a stub to the south, right? To that south?
To the south from the northwest quadrant.
South of the northeast, yep. So, everything east of that detention area, I know for a fact that that won't be gated. That would all be, you know, public, so we could do a stub to the south, possibly in line with like Oklahoma Stone Way there.
But that wouldn't require us to take any action, right? Because that's already required.
No.
No? The, the connection to the lot to the south is not required?
No, it is not. It's not required, but I think he's getting ready to stand up and speak to it, so.
We see a part of it on this page. There's another section going down, but we're talking about what's on this page, Oklahoma Stone Way. One of those four.
Is there a different, can we have this one pulled up? The one that shows the whole L shape, upside-down L shape? Oh, yeah, that one.
So, this green area here, these are, these are existing homes, and this piece of land right here is vacant, and I think they're looking, Mark's looking for a connection to the south through here, which he just brought up, Timmy, which I would agree to that.
Okay.
And then what about connecting from that southern portion to the west also? Yep, right there where the hand is waving.
I know I got a phone call. I received a phone call from the Greenwood subdivision. They absolutely do not want any connections. They, matter of fact, they protested Green Hill and requested that no connections be made. They called me. I said we were not planning anything to connect to them to the south. And so, where are you requesting? Oh, that there.
In the southern?
They have, they have public access.
Where the hand was earlier when I was speaking. Go down a little bit, right there to the right, just right there, somewhere along there.
That looks like it's in the exhibit.
That is, that's part of what Mark is showing right there.
Right, so, Mark said, uh, when you shared an avenue with Johnson Associates. Earlier today, we filed a rezoning application for a straight R1 case for this tract, and so when we saw the preliminary plat on the agenda, we pulled it together, and I talked to Mr. Grubbs right before this hearing, so I apologize, we couldn't get together sooner. Because this is a larger agricultural subdivision here, that is our only access through this property. So, what we are hoping for is alternative access and kind of backdoor access both to the north and back to the east. I think it also achieves the TE that staff wanted, which was a connection back to an arterial, because the subdivision then would be allowed to go south, come through, and tie back out to Mustang Road. So, what we're requesting are the two stub streets for Mr. Grubbs' development, one from the north and then one from the east.
Then, so that makes sense to me, but again, that wouldn't require any additional action from us at the preliminary plat?
We would request it be a TE.
Okay.
So that it comes back on their final plat, and between now and then, we can work out the location. We're amenable to what works for their development in terms of where the stub needs to be placed.
Okay.
He drew this prior to knowing what their preliminary plat layout was.
And are you okay with the needment reserved there?
And you not building the stub street into the property?
Yeah. I was only thinking that you wanted the one access point from the north.
What Mark still is, is now you're connecting those two different products from his other side to that one, right?
I think I'm okay, yeah, I don't, yeah. So, I'm okay with the connections here. This is, this, this product over here would be the differentiation, so what they do here, I, you know.
Okay.
But, you know, I thought, originally when I was looking at this, I thought he was looking for one, where I see now that he is looking for two.
Trying to achieve connectivity.
So, now, Commissioner La Forge may have been asking if the southernmost portion of this parcel will connect to the, the properties to the south. Was that what you were saying?
Nope, to the west, just what Mark is talking about.
Okay, so, okay. Just wanted to confirm. Commissioner Claire, what do you think on language for the TE?
I think I'm squared away. It sounds to me like we're going to land on a pedestrian connection only.
Within the parcel.
Within the, within the northwest parcel.
Then I think we're just looking for, any other questions from commissioners?
I, I'm puzzled by that. I mean, based on the developer's desire to separate the types of units he's going to build, you know, I, I mean, if there were some physical barrier or problem with making that connection, that would be one thing. Otherwise, I don't see that as a particularly compelling reason to abandon the connectivity.
Good point.
Well, if I, I mean, if I decide to gate, I mean, if it's an upper-end product and they would like to gate that, and then you wouldn't want to connect the gated community with the community to the east, and that's the reason that we're looking at that.
I'm struggling as well, as Commissioner Powers said, with the upper end, I mean, these look very similar, they're in, similar in size, they're in a similar part of the city. I don't, I don't understand either why we would call something upper-end right there, but that's not upper-end. They look, it all looks the same to me. I don't know that I can figure out this, separating these two because of a made-up line between these. I don't know.
Are you saying that you think that the streets to the west will be private streets? You're kind of gating it?
I'm saying that they could be, yes. And, you know, I was surprised to see it as a, as a TE. I mean, I know the subregs require interconnectivity between sections, but it doesn't require interconnectivity. So, I mean, that's just a, you know, that's, I believe that's in the comp plan, but that's not part of the subreg, so I'm not, you know, it's written as a TE, which...
Technically speaking, I think that's true. The spirit and intention of the subregs and the comp plan would be the interconnectivity of neighborhoods, and that's speaking to Commissioner Powers and La Forge's point. I think that's the concern.
Otherwise, you would just be encouraging people to chop up their developments into smaller pieces so they could say that, you know, it doesn't have to connect to this other piece over here. Make any sense to me.
Also, let me make sure I understand what I'm looking at here. That main north-south street we're talking about, at the top, there's a cul-de-sac, and at the bottom, there's a cul-de-sac. Those cul-de-sacs are, you can't drive through the little circle, is that right? You're not allowing people to drive from one side to the other? Sorry, what, you, no, down to the left, that, that north-south street, which I think we're calling the barrier between the upper end, at the top of it, right near your cursor, is a, it looks like a traditional cul-de-sac, but it's surrounded by street almost. Not that one, the one just above to the right.
I think that's a common area.
That's because there's drainage going down through there.
So, you've used a common area and drainage to separate?
Yes. That, I mean, because of the drainage coming down through.
Because of drainage. And is that also true down at the bottom of it, that same spot down on the south? You can't drive through because of the drainage issue?
That's how we're separating the two sides, correct.
Is it really a drainage issue there?
There is, yeah. You see the light?
Yeah.
You see the light green line?
Yeah, okay.
But the, that's not some, I mean, the drainage is not preventing the connection?
No, I mean, it, I agree. It doesn't, I mean...
No, they're going to have to reroute it.
Then why would those streets not go through right there?
Because we desire not to connect the two sides.
I think, I think, well, let's take it, let's vote on it, but just looking at it, I bet there's consensus on the side of requiring the connection between the two and keeping the TE. Maybe if you bring it back in the final plat stage, we could look at it and see, because it might be obnoxious to have a gate, two gates, one from 164th, one in the middle of the neighborhood. But at this point, it sounds like there's consensus to require the connection, but I'm looking.
I'm, at a minimum, a pedestrian connection. I was, I felt like that was a good move, but I could agree with these points on vehicular as well because of the whole, it establishes a, a way of not providing connectivity when that's the true intent of the comp plan.
Yeah. Let's, why don't we just, oh, Jared, do you want to?
Yeah, Jared Martin Planning Department. I just, I did want to clarify, there is discussion in the, in the staff report about, about the stubs, the interconnectivity between core sections and the standard TE that we always see, interconnectivity between core sections and other parcels, and that was supposed to be carried down as a TE, and it was omitted by accident. So, the, my understanding is Green Hill to the east was required to stub. They just didn't show it on the preliminary plat at the time. So, they're, they will be stubbing when they come back in with a future phase. So, I was meant to put the TE to say that they should work with that developer to provide that connection, and then it sounds like they've worked out additional connections now for the, for the east, for the southern development that they were talking about a minute ago. So, I think that does need to be added as a TE.
Okay. Is there, where, where are we on the connection between vehicular connection inside this parcel? Are we, it sounds, we at least all agree that there should be pedestrian connection, but where are we on vehicular connection? I lean towards the vehicular connection.
I definitely do.
So, there's, but...
It comes up, it's not like it's never come up before. We often have the connections even in gated situations.
I can't hear you. I mean, I just, just...
We often have, I mean, this isn't the first time we've had an issue of connectivity in one gated portion and one non-gated portion of a subdivision, so it's, I mean, you've, you've encountered it before.
I think you see it in other subdivisions. I mean, just because, say, if you do, you're doing a duplex portion or a, I know that we've done other ones where there was duplexes and single family, and we, we agreed to the pedestrian connection but didn't do connectivity between the two products. So, it's not something that this commission has not agreed to before, but...
It goes both ways. Both, both options have...
Both, both options have been approved.
And, and, you know, so it's, like I said, it's the desire of the end user, if this, I mean, if the commission can't get, you know, get past that and we have to connect, we have to connect. But bringing it up to discuss it because it's the desire not to, it's not required by the, and it's not required by the subreg, so...
I guess, I guess I'm kind of the odd one out, I mean, I agree with the pedestrian, but I'm, I'm not sold in this particular case that we had to have vehicular access.
What was that?
I said I'm not sold that we need vehicular access between the two areas, I do think we need the pedestrian access in this particular case, I mean, I think we need the pedestrian access no matter what, and the vehicular in this case, given the proximity of the drives to the north, I don't know that, I'm, I don't, I would be okay with it out having the vehicular access between the two sections, so...
And I'm very agreeable with the pedestrian, so...
And, but you're good with the connection to the east?
I mean, if they're gonna require, we didn't put that, we didn't put that in there because they didn't have a stub to the west, I wasn't involved with that, I believe that's their project.
Okay, well, no, I'm talking about the one that Jared just mentioned to the east, right?
Yeah, he's talking about the same one.
So Green Hill, which is the subdivision to Mark's east, that required a stub that was not reflected on our preliminary plat, so if he picks up that stub, grants one on his west boundary, that means you're almost at the full section that you have connectivity through all of these subdivisions, because you'll be able to go...
That makes sense to me.
Almost the whole mile at this point, so when the last project comes in on the far east side, as long as they pick up the stub, you'll be able to meander your whole way through the section.
Yeah.
We're good with the stub to the east, and then I know that you're asking for two connections to that piece.
Correct, yeah, one on, one on the north side of our tract should be south side of Mark's plat, and then one on the west side of his, which is what is reflected on this drawing, and we can work out with Mark exactly where, but someone in this general area and then somewhere along his west boundary line on the southern piece.
Do you have a sense, I'm sorry, do you have a sense of where your stub will go, to the east of his property into, is it Green Hill?
I'd have to go back and look at Green Hill, we may have just picked it up at the southern end, but we'll have to go back and look at the final, we haven't gotten the final plat on that phase, we're still on the upper half of the project.
Do you have, just for clarification purposes for the record, what are you calling this development? Your development, your proposed development?
It has not been named yet.
Okay.
I think it's in as the address off of Greenwood, so 15719 Greenwood.
So so far, where we are is we, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is we've said one connection to the east, agreeable, coordinated between developments, two connections to one, one from the northern portion to the south, one from the, your southern portion to the west, and we're discussing whether it's pedestrian or vehicular between the east and west portions of this spot.
Yes, so I think we just need to go ahead and let Commissioner Claire make a motion and see where we are on that connection, so, you know...
I got one, one final clarification, do we want to see two connections, interconnections or one?
At least one.
Between the two, I think at least one.
What are we talking about now?
You're talking about over, we're still talking about inside the parcel.
We're talking about the interconnectivity, so I'm, I'm, I'm set.
With pedestrian connection?
No vehicular connections.
No vehicular, okay.
Okay, I move to approve item C 7637, subject to the technical evaluations, amending TE3, to read, street connections shall be, one street connection shall be made on the eastern boundary to Green Hill addition, two connections shall be made on the southernmost, westernmost portion of the property to the proposed future 20-acre development, on the southernmost boundary of the western half, an additional street connection to that same development, and then a minimum of one street connection to connect the two.
So, so maybe, maybe we should separate that, we need to keep, it sounds like we need to keep TE3 in its entirety, and then let's add a TE9 that does the additional language regarding the connection to the east and the connection to the southwest for the sake of simplicity.
Okay.
So maybe just, let's just read in TE9.
Okay.
As, with that language, with the connections to the external parcels.
All right, TE9 then shall be, provide a street stub connection to the Green Hill development, and two new street stub connections to the proposed 20 acres in the southwest portion of the eastern half of the development.
I think that works, does that work for Mark, Marks, does that, does that work?
So we're, I want, to be clear, we're, we're requiring one street stub to the east, correct?
Yep.
Two street stubs into this development.
Yep.
And now you're requiring connectivity to this as well?
Yes, we're gonna keep TE3.
I thought you said no, you were on board with no interconnectivity, but you're not.
I said at a minimum, I wanted the pedestrian connection, but the street connection was preferred.
Minimum, you want a pedestrian connection?
We're voting on the street.
Voting on the street connection, because we've been discussed, we've been going back and forth, and so the consensus is support for a vehicular connection versus just a pedestrian connection.
And then what other stub did you reference?
That was it.
That was it.
Just here and here?
Three street, three street stubs externally, and then the one interconnected street connection between the two.
Internal.
I have to see where we are on this.
All right, okay.
Okay, so the motion is to approve C 7637, subject to the additional technical evaluation as read into the record, that motion has been seconded by Commissioner La Forge, please cast your votes.
And subject to the existing TEs.
And, and subject to the existing TEs as well. And the motion passes. We are now in line for item 18.
Item 18 is PUD 1999, application to rezon 3700 North Walker from R1, C3 and CUP 26 to PUD 1999.
Good afternoon, Mark Zenzel with Johnson and Associates, address is One East Sheridan Avenue. I'm gonna jump into this project while, while we're grabbing some handouts, this is a pretty prominent site in northwest Oklahoma City, it's the former First Christian Church site, we've been working on this project now for quite some time, and our office, we know, have looked at it for much more intensive uses, and fortunately, Mr. Bradshaw was able to go under contract on it, and he, it's a very exciting project. Real quickly, before we show the site plan, our PUD is divided into three tracks, the first track is track one, which will be attached to single-family townhomes, that track today is zone C3, commercial, with no restrictions on it, the balance is under an old CUP and R1 zoning. Track two is a modified, single-family zoning, where we've modified some bulk regulations for lot size, and then track three is an existing office building, we've put that in its own tract, it'll remain office, and that's how the tracks lay out, so if you could go to the site plan. So before you, what we believe to be a great urban info project, that's gonna utilize alleyways to help achieve some of the smaller and narrower lots, so our main entrance and focal point is going to be off of North Walker, there's a boulevard entrance that's gonna come in, those will be, they're the largest lots in the development, it's more of the estate lots, there's a boulevard entry that goes all the way through, and it'll meander up into the northeast portion of the project where we have various lot sizes, that's what the different colored tans denote. So there are multiple alleyways that are contained within common areas that'll be privately maintained, and because of the alleyways, that's how we've narrowed up the lots. So there are changes that were just handed out, Commissioner Powers was kind enough to meet us over lunch today where we hammered out some, some tweaks and clarifications that we hope you all will find acceptable, that have been worked into the document. These changes have been provided back to the staff in both forms, both the redline version of the PUD and then the summary of all of the changes to make it a little bit easier for the meeting minutes. So within the PUD, we have density caps, we have lot size restrictions, within track one, we are seeking an allowance for one lot to be a neighborhood-style coffee shop or ice cream parlor, and that is only restricted to one lot, so there cannot be a lot of commercial encroachment or additional commercial that comes later, we've been pretty restrictive in what we've put down. So before you are the new TEs that we're requesting being added, and we'll take the municipal councilor's advice on how they'd best like to see these 11 TEs worked in, but again, they've been changed in the document, resubmitted to staff, I have additional copies if anybody in the audience would like to see. At the end of the day, all of the restrictions that are being put in place were more restrictive than what was in the public notice and what's been in the public records, so with that, I'm happy to walk through all of the changes, Mr. Bradshaw's here, Mr. Box is here, who has been the architect helping with the site plan and the architecture to this point. The last thing I'll note, we had a neighborhood meeting on Monday, there were probably 150 to 175 people that showed up, we had to open an overflow room, we met for about an hour and 45 minutes, I'd say overwhelmingly, the comments were positive, they asked questions about traffic, which we reviewed with them, they asked questions about architectural design, landscaping, some of those have been worked into this document, others were simply questions. I think overall, and Commissioner Powers can correct me on this, overall, I think folks were excited to see that this property was going to be developed, be developed as primarily detached, single-family residential, so with that, happy to walk through all the changes if necessary, otherwise, we'd ask for your recommendation of approval.
Commissioner Powers?
Well, everything he said was true, and the meeting was, it was, they're well-attended, and, and there was a lot of interest and excitement, I'll have to say, you know, this site has been looked at, and there have been a number of proposals for what might happen here, the hard corner at Walker and 36th is zone C3, and so, you know, everything from Onq to, you know, and there were proposals for the whole thing to be, you know, apartments, there were, there were proposals for the, I don't know whether any of you would remember, at one point, there was going to be this whole sort of live-work-play village that was gonna go on there, and it was going to require serious change in the streams and all that kind of stuff, well, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers put the quash on that, so, I mean, there's been a, it's a, it's a beautiful site, it's a kind of iconic to a lot of people, and I, and I think for that reason, it's been a very difficult site to develop. Separate, apart from all of that, it has its own issues, it has a significant change of grade, it does have these streams that run through it, that kind of, you know, cut it in half and even in quarters in different places, so I, for one, I'll speak for myself, was thrilled to see a proposal for the development of it in, you know, R1 terms, the idea that it was going to be residential and going to be single-family residential was, was a rare opportunity, I will say. Having that mixed with the particular developer who's proposing it, being somebody who is, you know, well-anchored to Oklahoma City, has a lot of other sites that you can go look at and see what the development type he has, you know, the product he puts out, and, and not, you know, have to guess about how it will turn out later. And still, there were, there were a number of issues that, you know, had to be worked through, and, and yes, we, we sat down over lunch and hammered out some kind of specific little changes, tweaks to things, but I, I am very pleased with this proposal, I think it will be a real asset to the city, the fact that this room is not filled with people tells you a lot, because there were a lot of people at that meeting, but, and there was some concern, just the timing of it, it was so, so close to the planning commission hearing, but because of that, I was especially keen to listen to the comments and, and see whether there were things that would require more discussion, would require it to be continued and talked about more and hashed out, but in the end, not, we were able to do that, you know, back and forth, and then again over lunch today, so, and the, the changes have been made, and they, they show on this document on the MDS, so you see how they, how they work, and then separately, just for clarification, they're all right here, so. I know we do have somebody signed up to speak, I think, so you might want to hear from them.
Betsy Brenstetter? I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, Betsy Brenstetter.
I heard it.
And please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Betsy Brenstetter, 604 Northwest 41st Street, lived down the street from Janice, Janice works really hard for everybody, the city, I just wanted to go on record to say that overall, the neighborhood is very pleased, just as Janice noted, there have been concerns about the traffic, which I don't know that we can do anything except for continued work on traffic calming in our neighborhood, Mr. Bradshaw has agreed to support us in any way that he can to, to make it good for his new neighborhood as well, so with that being said, we are very happy that residential will be going on this lot, so, thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I do have a few questions based on the changes, first, with regard to 3B, Mark, on the first page?
Correct.
Permitted uses, limited to one, the live-work unit, limited to one lot in the development for the ability to have a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood coffee shop, what does that mean?
So we did not include the drive-through use unit, but in our conversations with Commissioner Powers, we wanted to make it clear that when it comes in for building permit, that this is a walk-up cafe-style use, that it is not going to be anything with a drive-through, anything that's intended for people to really be driving into the property as a commercial use. If you're familiar with Culture Coffee and the Page Woodson Development, very similar to that, and elemental-style coffee, downtown's more your jam, something that you're walking up, there could be a small patio outside, small use, nothing large or overly intensive.
No dedicated parking.
Plug for, plug for Culture Coffee in Ward 7, because it's great, but, so, wouldn't it be better for us to just specify, like, I'm concerned about the definition of the phrase pedestrian-oriented being clear?
You can blame me for that.
Would it be better to just ban, like, just say no drive-throughs in any way, shape or form, or say...
We don't allow for that, it's not allowed as a use.
The uses aren't in there, right, and to Commissioner Claire's point, one of the other things in here is that there's not a off, or off-site parking or off-street parking associated with the commercial use, it's intended to use the on-street parking within the neighborhood, so that's another piece that makes it more pedestrian-oriented and not geared toward vehicles.
Pedestrian-oriented by, by design.
I get, just, I get concerned about the use of phrases that are not defined in ordinance or in a subreg, so then when we say something like that, I'm trying to get, make sure that we all have the same, our intent is clear.
I think, I think, you, I understand completely, the, the use of that particular phrase, it's my fault, but I, I wanted just to make it clear, I thought, that even though it's not allowed to have an, you know, a drive-up, it's not allowed to have dedicated parking, that people understand, this is, this is really just something for people in the neighborhood to walk to, you know, so...
Okay. That was one issue. The landscape regulations is all of the, so the intent of some of these ammend- The landscape regulations is all of the, so the intent of some of these amendments, it sounds like, is really about the neighborhood sign. And that's going to come back to us with a specific plan?
It is.
That's correct. And I think that's one of the, I'll give Commissioner Powers credit for this, I think one of the more clever ways to have approached this. I think everyone seemed, seemed overly supportive and overwhelmingly supportive of the development, but understanding that this is also the gateway into their neighborhoods. What we worked out was Scott Howard's been engaged as a landscape architect. As he develops that plan for both the fence, the landscaping treatment, then ultimately the subdivision signage, that that will come back before you to ensure it was as stated at the neighborhood meeting. So the residents will have a chance to see it again, and then the planning commission will have a chance to see it again. Further, what we did in that section wasn't just say that we're going to bring it back, but we added a little bit more qualifying text that says you have the express approval over it that you can actually take into account the design of it, so that it's not just a rubber stamp. I know that's been a concern of specific plans in the past.
I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just, you know, this has already been approved, and, you know, you, all you can do is say, is it compliant with the PUD? I, I wanted that language in there to make it clear that when we look at, at the specific plan, whatever, whatever discussion we would be having now, we'll be having then.
Right. I love that. I think that's great. Then I just, and maybe this is a question for legal counsel on 11, about directing the construction traffic and the enforceability of that on our end. I mean, it's still, I'm, I'm all for the language, so I'm not for eliminating it. I just, I think my question's about enforceability for future reference, and it's okay if we don't know yet, but I, yeah.
I'll note, I'll note while it's being read, we've done this on several subdivisions in the past, most recently out at Morgan Road and 122nd. We did find it to be enforceable. We did find just having the conversation, putting up the right signage worked. That was also a single-family neighborhood. In that case, Morgan Road had just been resurfaced, and they didn't want heavy, heavy trucks tearing up the road the city just put in. So we believe that through our plan set and through Ron with the contractors, that we'll be able to take care of that, but I don't think having it in the PUD is by any means a bad idea.
It, it doesn't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Maybe. There we go. Sorry. The construction traffic to and from the project site, not being allowed on Walker, I think that's good language, and really, the, the sentence preceding that's just kind of, I think Commissioner Powers might agree, gives it a little more flavor with what, what the goal is here, so I don't think it necessarily hurts. I think at least the limitation on the construction traffic certainly would be enforceable. The rest of it's just given some flavors, so I think it's going to be okay.
Cool. A blessing from legal counsel there. So, okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
May I make a suggestion?
Please.
As far as the, I haven't quite seen TEs like this yet. So my recommendation as far as how to incorporate this, if your choices take it exactly as it's been presented today, I would, in your motion, recommend approval of the PUD subject to the technical evaluations as presented and provided to staff and the commission today. And then I would take the time just on the section headers related to TE1, section 5.0, section 2, TE2, related to section 7.8, and just run through the topics on the 11 bullet points. You don't need to read the whole document and, and call it good there, if that makes sense.
Yep. That's excellent. Excellent advice. I will say, thank you for the work that's been done, especially the community engagement piece. Can't say enough, I know Commissioner Powers has said that to me so many times for the whole time I've been on this commission, how important it is to have so many conversations consistently with the neighborhood. And so I appreciate it, Mark. So we're going to have a lot of controversial things coming to us on April 11th. If you can work your magic on that, that would be great, so.
Let me know the cases, and I'll take care of them.
If there's nothing else, Commissioner Powers?
We don't have any else lined up to speak?
Yes. There's, we're, we're all finished.
Which is, you know, in and of itself, just short of a miracle, I'm telling you, so. Okay. I am going to move approval, item number 18, PUD 1999, subject to technical evaluations.
Oh, did Barry have something? Oh, sorry, wait a second. I'm sorry. I was, I apologize, Commissioner Powers. I think we needed to talk to Barry, too.
Ah.
Or is that for the plat?
Very large public works. So the proposed changes to the PUD that Mark handed out now has some modifications to the allowable street configuration on street widths to basically say that they don't have to conform to the city's standards. That was not in the PUD document that we reviewed for the, for the development reviews for this meeting that went through engineering. The preliminary plat, that is the next item to come up on this, on this property, did show the non-standard street right-ofways and the configuration, so I don't want us to get into a situation where it's now written into the PUD, it's in the zoning, and allows these, the, the public streets to not conform to the subdivision regulations. And then we get into the preliminary plat item, and our hands are tied. So that's why I think we need to probably get into that discussion a little bit now, that what they're proposing on here for the public streets does, does not conform with the subdivision regulations. And so what they're asking for on this, and then on the, on the companion item, on the preliminary plat, is a 40-foot right-ofway with a five-foot utility easement on each side. That would get out to 50 feet. However, again, with the typical subdivision regulations, the front setback line is going to be 20 feet. With this PUD modification, it changes it to five in some locations, 10 in others, and we wind up with the, the potential situation where we've got water on one side of the street, we have sanitary sewer on the other side of the street. Now we've got to find a place to put the storm sewer, and we're going to wind up with, I think, at some point in the future, there's going to be a maintenance problem where we go in and have to, have to service water, we have to service the sewer line, we have to do something with the storm sewer, and we're actually going to be excavating right on the foundation of a structure because of where the building limit lines are set. And so it's my recommendation that we stay with the guidelines and, and that are set out in the subdivision regulations, if these are intended to be public streets. I think if, if we, if we allow, go with this change that's proposed, I, I think we're, we're setting the city up for some, some serious problems in the future when it comes to maintenance of the roadways and the utilities for, for this development.
So for clarity, hang on, just one second, Mark. So for clarity, Barry, we're talking about page three of the MDS, section 7.1. This PUD proposes connections, right-ofway width of 100 feet, which has a right-ofway eight, is that's not the way, where we're talking about?
Six. Section, or item six, section 9.5, platting regulations.
I'm in the wrong place. Sorry. This is why we're doing this.
Now, this document, I think it's actually under the track three.
There we go.
Bulk regulation, where it's spelled out.
In the which regulation? Sorry.
I think it says the track three.
I couldn't find it.
Page nine is where I'm seeing it, is it?
Page nine. Excellent. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all, we all knew the language we were talking about. But to, counsel just pointed out, it is TE, it's in number six in your, your packet on proposed TE changes. That's what we're talking about, right, Barry?
And I haven't seen that. I, I don't have that. I just have the MDS, the revised MDS.
Yes, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yes. That's what you're talking about, Mark. Okay. And so, so your point, Barry, is it should be 50 feet, that is the standard. They are requesting 40.
Yes, sir.
If they, and the concern is that if, in the event that there has some work done on those utilities that are located within that smaller easement, that city officials will have to work too close to the foundations for these structures. Is that the concern?
That combined, the, the right-ofway width combined with the suggested building setbacks start creating the, the potential for some problems with that.
Okay. Now, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. So one point of clarification, real quick, we're requesting a 40-foot right-ofway with five-foot easement on both sides to still give the city 50 feet of total area to maintain any and all infrastructure within it. Everything constructed within the right-ofway and the easement is constructed to city standard. We are not seeking any variance to the roadway width or to anything else, and we're agreeable to meet all of the utility separation requirements. Track one, the townhome tract, is the only tract with a five-foot setback. So we're confident that we can place the utilities where we need to. What makes this subdivision different than most is we have the rear-loaded alleys in the vast majority of all of the subdivision. That's where our sanitary sewer's going to go. So we're not going to be cluttering the right-ofway with all three public infrastructure types. It's going to be water and then storm. So we're not going to have, we believe, that issue there. This is an issue of paramount importance because of the northeast portion of our development. As it necks down, one of the key design elements was tree preservation with the trees along the creek. So when that line was defined, plus our kind of southeastern property line, in order to get the lot yield that makes this project work, that's how we came up with the 40-foot of right-ofway. We understand we're asking for something that's not standard. We don't think we're providing a situation that's creating an unsafe situation, but it's an infill site with subdivision regulations that were written in the 70s and 80s for greenfield development. So we are asking for a little bit of consideration on this one item, but again, we're not varying any of the construction standards. It's simply how we're getting to 50, which is 40 feet of right-ofway and five foot of easement on each side.
Barry, you wanted to respond to that before we take more questions from commissioners about that?
So I do agree that we are getting the, the 50-foot, but we still have the issue to contend with that the building setbacks are being moved closer to that 50-foot limit, even in, even in the areas where we've got the 10-foot building limit line. And there are areas there where we, where there will be water, sanitary, and storm in that, in that street right-ofway and easement. It, it's still kind of my position that I think we're, we're deviating from a standard that was put in place for a reason, and that is to give us adequate room to construct the facilities and to be able to maintain those in the future. And that, again, that, that's what I would kind of hold as the recommendation. I mean, we've even gone so far, even if they were considered private, we might have a little bit of more leeway with that, but in general, even the private street requirements still match the public street requirements. So I, I know that's kind of getting off-topic a little bit, but it would still be public work stance, recommendation that we, that we stay with the requirement set out in the subdivision regulations.
And I'd like for Tim to address that. I'll just make one point. What we're asking for in terms of setback is not different than all of downtown. Those have maximum setbacks, so it's common that you build up to a right-ofway line or an easement line. We did it at 700 West from Mr. Bradshaw, where we built right up to an easement. It's, it's commonplace. We're still giving the 50 feet for maintenance and utility spacing, but I want Tim to address...
Let's hear from Dustin, then we'll hear from Tim.
Dustin Segre's Utilities Department. I'm going, we have an engineering standard of public street design. Limiting that right-ofway width to 40 feet makes it a non-standard design for public streets. We have a standard for a reason. If they want to change that standard, then make it, then make it private. That's the problem that I have with, with them. With the utilities, with the utilities in the alleyways, is I have to have a 20-foot space. So from right-ofway or from building to building, because they have garages in there, if they put the sanitary sewer down the middle of the alley, I have 20 feet. The reason why I need the 20 feet is because, yes, you can build right up to the easement, but if I dig down in that easement and I cause damage to that structure, the city is responsible for that, for that liability for the damage to that structure. Now, going with the 40-foot easement, what that, or the 40-foot right-ofway, what that does is, it allows them to go with, to be able to get their lot size that they need to be able to go back and only have the five-foot building limit line with the five-foot utility easement. And so that's where, by limiting the right-ofway, you're limiting the building setback, you're limiting the lot length that they would really require to get the density that they need in here. And so my only issue with this is, it's a non-standard design. You cannot make a non-standard design a public right-ofway or a public street if it's non-standard. We have engineering standards for a reason. If they want to modify those, then, then make it private.
But to your point, Dustin, but we're talking, but as far as the paving in the street portion of this, what was stated is that that's going to be, that will meet city standards, right? We're talking about the space outside of the street.
Correct. And the, and the reason why the space outside the street is, is with it is you got to remember, is you got telecommunication, you got gas, you got other utilities that need to be in that utilities. So they're going to, there's not enough room to be able to put everything in there without getting closer to that house, because you got to dig these trenches. And with having that house, only a five-foot building limit line, instead of a 20-foot setback on a normal subdivision, it allows us more conservative, so that way, as we dig our trenches, we do not compromise the foundation of the house structure.
Tim?
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. And with all due respect to my esteemed colleagues, I appreciate their comments and respect them greatly. The way we looked at the subdivision, and Janice kind of opened the door on this initially, is we had a lot of, this property has a lot of baggage. Included in that baggage is, there's a lot of public infrastructure in there. We have large sewer lines that run north, south, and east-west along the creek. The city replaced the sewer not ten many years ago and plowed through all the trees and left a pretty good scar, and the neighborhood remembered that scar. So when we approached the neighborhood, and Bruce Bacchus actually lives adjacent to this property to the north, he made it very clear to us that we've got to find a line that reserves these trees. And in order to do so, and in order to create a development that could be financially viable as well as constructible, this is how we designed it. I will point out, something that's being missed here is, number one, the alleyways are all 30 feet, not 20 feet, they're 30 feet. The, the rest of the addition that you see has lots that back up to the green spaces there around the North Street and the East Street of that southwest corner will all be built and designed conventionally. You'll have sewer in the back, some utilities in the back, and you'll have water, storm, and street. We are not seeking a variance to the street, public street design. We want it to be full width. We want the sidewalks to be public. They'll be in a public easement, because we want it, this neighborhood, to be able to share its right-ofways, its sidewalks, and all of its improvements with the surrounding neighborhoods. That's part of this discussion we've had. And we, in fact, are going to work with the Parks Department on the continuity of the trail system that's being designed that wants to come through this addition. That, in that, so that adds to the encompassment of being able to have connectivity to the parks, both north and south of this addition and west of this addition. So, so there was a method to our madness. We do have limited front yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks for a reason. On the townhomes, they're all rear access. There won't be anything in the front of the house, except for a front porch, that would require like a driveway or a garage door, things like that. So all the garages, with the exception of the few lots that I mentioned before along the north and the east side of that southwest corner, will have rear access garages. And in order to get our lot depths that we need, in fact, practically build houses, we needed to use as much of the lot as we can. The one thing that Mark's mentioned, or I think Barry may have mentioned, with regard to the, the platted utility easements, they will not just be utility easements, they're going to be street drainage and public utility easements. That allows street maintenance, that allows storm sewer maintenance. And in that 50 feet, it will be no different than one of the subdivisions you approved out at Morgan and 164th Street in the past. We have 50-foot of space to work with to put water, sewer, storm. The sewer's going in the back in all cases here. So it's really a condition that's not any different. We're just calling it a little different. That allows us the flexibility that we need in the lot depths, and in order to make these lots viably constructible. So I'd be happy answering questions.
Questions, commissioners, for Dustin, or Tim, or Mark, or Barry on this issue?
Commissioner, can I say one more thing?
Please.
I'm just, I'm just afraid that we're setting a precedence here, that we're modifying a standard detail, a standard thing that the city has put out. And so if we're sitting down this precedence of now, are we, is five foot? And so, if we're setting down this precedence of now, are we, is five-foot, is two-foot, is three-foot? So, I just want to make sure that, you know, to keep that in mind, that we have standards, and we try to keep standards consistently throughout the city for a reason.
Thank you. Please.
I have a comment.
Please, Commissioner Govine.
I don't think, I understand and appreciate the setting a precedent, but I don't think this is setting a precedent, because I think this is a very unique site. It's not a typical greenfield subdivision. And my personal view on that is we have to work with this site, and we're preserving a lot of green space, and it's worth a little, being a little bit tighter. But that's me, and that's based on the fact that we're still giving the 50 feet, and it's not different than urban conditions that we have, and we're going to have more of. So, sometimes you just got to work close to things, and that's the way it is in construction.
If I might add to that, that we, I didn't mention, but there's, I've done this a long time. Unfortunately, I think I'm older than all the guys over there, so there's been a few subdivisions like this, that we've had to do this in the past. I can think of a couple industrial developments where a 60-foot right-of-way was required and a 32-foot street. We could not get the lot depth we needed in a subdivision of industrial, so the Public Works Director allowed us to vary that back at the time. We platted a 50-foot right-of-way and dedicated easements on each side, achieved exactly what they needed, put the 32-foot street in, and had room for the utilities. So, because I'm old, I can't remember all their names, but there's been variances like this because of the specialty of the land or the conditions on the site.
Other comments, questions from commissioners?
I was just going to say, I mean, Commissioner Govine said that he doesn't think it's going to set a precedent, but I kind of hope it does set a precedent. I mean, I think we could use more neighborhoods where front doors and porches are on the sidewalk for people to interact more with people on the sidewalk, where we have rear-loaded lots, where either trash collection or garage units are located, and take that traffic off the street so that kids and people can use the sidewalks and not have to be so concerned with somebody backing out of a driveway. I've done several of these communities before I came to Oklahoma. In my opinion, I mean, I'm shocked that it's taken 14, 15 years for this type of development, and I know there's a few out there, but for this type of more traditional neighborhood design to come to Oklahoma. I think it's needed. I think it makes for healthier communities, and I'm glad to see it. I hope that some of the city standards can be updated to be a little bit more accommodating to these types of developments, and I think it needs to be looked at.
Here, here. Other comments, commissioners? Other questions for staff? Okay.
So, I'm going to move approval. Did I do that already?
You did. You started, and I stopped you.
Item number 18, PUD 1999, subject to technical evaluations as presented, and I'll go through and just highlight what they are. They're written, they'll be provided to staff, they've already been incorporated into the MDS, and so they'll arrive at City Council already baked in. But they address Section 5.0, physical characteristics, Section 7.8, Plano KC, oh, that's just a typo, Section 9.0, special conditions, and this pertains basically to the existing bell tower, which has been converted into a cell tower in Tract 1, 2, and 3, and the Tract 3 bulk regulations, Section 9.1, the architectural regulations, Section 9.2, landscaping regulations, Section 9.5, plating regulations, Section 9.8, vehicular access regulations, Section 9.9, parking regulations, Section 9.16, common areas, Section 9.18, specific plan and permitting requirements, and Section 10.0, development sequence.
The motion from Commissioner Powers moves to recommend a City Council approval of PUD 1999, subject to the technical evaluations as listed in the exhibit provided to the Planning Commission dated March 28, 2024. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item 19.
Item 19 is KC 7635, preliminary plat of 36th and Walker Residential Community, located north of Northwest 36th Street and east of North Walker Avenue, and variances to sections 5.1.8. A, 5.3.2. E, 1, and Table 5.1 in Section 5.3.2. A of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzow, Johnson and Associates, addresses One Hundred and Twenty Sheraton Avenue. This is the companion preliminary plat for the zoning case you just heard. We're in agreement with all the TEs. We are requesting the variances. I'd be happy to address them, but they go in line with the conversation we just had in terms of it's an urban subdivision on an infill site that requires a little bit of a different approach. And then, the street name, I'll just note, I think a variance was going to end up being required either way, but our main street in off of Walker, it jogs all the way up to the north. So, rather than have two street names on essentially one street, we're asking for a variance so it could be a named street and be consistent through the development. So, other than that, we're happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval.
Commissioner Powers? Nope.
If not, and if there aren't any questions from the commission, I will move to approve item number 19.
Well, I think we have to go through the variances.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. I knew that. Variances to, so the preliminary plat, C 7635, variances to sections 5.1, 8. A. Can I do them all at once?
Can we? It's probably better to do them all at once individually.
Okay, we'll do that one. That's fine.
So, your, Commissioner Powers moves to approve a variance to Section 5.1.8. A of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Powers?
I'll move approval of variance to Section 5.3.2. E, 1.
Commissioner Powers moves to approve of a variance to Section 5.3.2. E, 1 of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Powers?
And so, finally, I move approval of the variance to Table 5.1 in Section 5.3.2. A of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Powers moves approval of the variance to Table 5.1 in Section 5.3.2. A of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
And now, I will move approval of item number 19, C 7635, the preliminary plat of 36th and Walker Residential Community.
Commissioner Powers moves approval of C 7635, subject to the technical evaluations as provided in the exhibit dated March 28, 2024, presented here at the Planning Commission, and in addition to the technical evaluations that are listed in the staff report. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're in line for item 20.
Item 20 is a resolution adopting the 2024 BikeWalk OKC update, Oklahoma City's Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
Good afternoon. Justin Henry with the Planning Department. Thank you all. So, this is an update to BikeWalk OKC, which is the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. It'll be in the team's file. All right. This plan is kind of the result of, you know, a multi-year process. I'd like to thank our kind of advisory board that we had. It was made up of City Council members, traffic commissioners, a couple of former planning commissioners, and several other external stakeholders. It was really helpful to us. We did a lot of community engagement, especially in the initial phases of this plan update. And I'd also like to thank Sasha McCrone and Max Harris, who really are the authors of a lot of these changes, so. Since BikeWalk OKC was originally adopted in 2018, we've been very busy. We've constructed 176 miles of new sidewalks all over the city, 16 miles of multi-use trails, and we've more than doubled our on-street bike lanes all since that was originally done. So, we went for a more full update than we originally envisioned, just because the plan was being implemented fairly rapidly, and we wanted to make sure we had enough projects to program for future funding sources. We've had a study session on this before, and so I'll be kind of brief on some of these sections, but please let me know if you would like me to stop and expand on anything. But the plan is really based on a couple of key elements, including the pedestrian priority areas, where we identify through a number of metrics kind of spelled out in the plan, areas that are close to being walkable, that are really in need of sidewalks to kind of make that next, that next jump into walkability. And then also pedestrian access enhancement projects. So, we recognize there's other needs outside of those PPAs, and so the plan also calls for sidewalks along transit routes to schools, to parks, and then we've added a new street enhancement and placemaking element as well. So, I mentioned the pedestrian priority areas. The original plan had 10 pedestrian priority areas, and we have added 10 additional, which will be shown. The originals are still in the plan. You can see, this is an example of mini-maps in here in Chapter 4, where we show which sidewalks have already been funded here in gold, and then which are remaining priority sidewalks. And then here you can see the 10 new pedestrian priority areas that are being added. A lot of them, really all of them are adjacent to previous ones. We're kind of growing out into those next priority neighborhoods. You'll notice the maps here are a little bit different. We've added some additional context for some of these new priority areas to help people kind of understand the logic behind some of our decisions. Three of our big drivers for sidewalks tend to be schools, parks, and transit stops. There's pedestrian drivers to get people to places. And then, the new plan really prioritizes arterial and collector streets, getting sidewalks before neighborhood streets, just because we want to make sure we address those most dangerous streets first. The new street enhancement element, you know, sidewalks are our first step towards walkability, but it doesn't make a place feel comfortable or walkable to just have a sidewalk. So, these are areas that really need that next level. It tends to be our commercial areas where we have partners that can help us with like ongoing maintenance. So, if you picture a lot of our commercial districts where we've done a lot of work recently, like Plaza and Paseo, Capitol Hill, those are areas where we want to continue to make those kind of improvements, like lighting and landscaping, where we have a partner that can help us maintain. We made some pretty big changes to the transit sidewalks that are called for in the plan. Previously, it kind of prioritized a rank of bus stops, and did, I kind of expanded around those. We really feel like the priority now is to address sidewalks all along the existing routes. So, really, the plan calls for all embark routes that don't have sidewalk to have those infilled. They tend to be on busy streets and in commercial areas anyway, and so it's kind of compelling for multiple reasons. Unfortunately, the picture like you see in the top right is far too common, where we have a lot of bus stops that are just sitting in greenfields with no sidewalk access. I mentioned that we also are calling for schools to get additional sidewalks outside those pedestrian priority areas. We have kind of a ranking here. We were able to do a lot of sidewalk, schools like this in the Better Streets, Safer Cities sales tax, and so this is kind of the next set of priorities. We are actively looking for some grant opportunities as well that can help us get these done sooner rather than later. And parks as well, we have a lot of park needs outside of those pedestrian priority areas, and trying to identify which ones, I need to come in what order, so. Might pause there for a second if there's any question about sidewalks. If I don't see any, then might go into bicycles and trails.
I do have one question. Sure. So, I know a few slides back, you were, enlisted some future projects, and Northeast 23rd Street was one of them. But it's not just, it's not just the sidewalks, right? It's a more comprehensive...
Yeah, that's right. That's a good example of one of our big street enhancement projects.
Gotcha.
So, we have money from the Better Streets, Safer Cities sales tax that we're using to do a pretty comprehensive, it's a $6.5 million street enhancement along that. It already has complete sidewalks mostly along the route, so this is really more about that next level of lighting, landscaping, public art, maybe some safety features as well that can be added there.
Traffic calming.
Traffic calming, right?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Yeah, bike facilities, I might give a little reminder, you probably hear this term from us sometimes, but we have these different tiers of bike facilities depending on the street they're kind of being located on. Tier one is kind of our highest level of a protected facility. The example you can see there is parking-protected bike lanes, where you have a layer of traffic that's protecting the cyclists. Our first one of those has been constructed right now on Lottie Avenue, which would be a little different than that, because it won't have that concrete barrier, but will have the parking on the outside of the bike lane. Tier two is are just our regular bike lanes. It gives us space. These are kind of appropriate on streets where you get a little heavier traffic, but they're still moving slow enough that it's not as dangerous. And then Tier three is really just shared facilities. We found a lot of those really kind of turn into traffic calming projects, because we can put down this simple little marker that says it's a bike route on the street, but what really makes it comfortable for people is if there's not a lot of speeding and reckless driving, that we can kind of abate with some other measures, so. I'd like to talk a little bit about our facility selection type, like how did we come up with what tiers we put on what streets? It's really based on kind of the components of how wide is the street, how much traffic volume is there, and what is the current speed? The thinking being, the more room that, well, the higher the volume of traffic, the more congested it is and the faster those cars are going, the more likely we are to need to separate the bikes from the road, if that makes any sense. So, if it's a big, busy arterial, a lot of times we're going to want to do something that's like a multi-use path on the side of the street, like a double-wide sidewalk. If it's a lot slower street, we can often accommodate something in the existing right-of-way. We've made a little bit of changes to our trails as well. We've added this new kind of middle ground category here called that off-street multi-use trail that I just mentioned. We've built some of these as an example, like Will Rogers Trail, where it kind of parallels next to the hospital district. We find these are good alternatives there for those, the spots where we still want to make those connections, but we need something that's really separated from the busy street. This is a big, complicated map. I hope you had a chance to like dive into it in your printed copies of the plan, but I know that it's not comprehensible necessarily here. It's just kind of the nature of planning something kind of complex like this. The red lines are our Tier one facilities that kind of pop out. Those are the, those protected elements, and the green are kind of those off-street trails. Everything else is kind of those lower tiers where we can kind of accommodate something on-street. All right. And, all right. It's still based around kind of these, this two main concepts of having a crosstown connections, like north, south, east, west, kind of corridors that can move people around the city, and this outer loop, that's the Grand Boulevard loop, that's been an idea in the city plans for about 80 years, and kind of finally culminating with Deep Fort Trail being built on the northeast side now. The prioritization for bike projects has changed a bit in the updated the plan. Previously, we kind of ranked all of the projects individually and seen, saw how they fell. The new prioritization really kind of concentrates on finishing a lot of internal connections and kind of the core of the city first, before it moves into a lot of the bike lanes that would be in the more suburban areas. I will note, this is one little change that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is it, is it based on the idea that sort of encourage, I'm not quite sure how to say this, actual usage like for getting around, not just for recreational use? I mean, the connections in the areas where people are actually likely, for instance, to bike to work or, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, you know, we have a kind of a robust trail system in the city already. We're about to tap 100 miles of off-street trail, and there's a lot of recreational riders, but what we don't have as much of yet is kind of those transportation-related like projects. So, we've got kind of a system starting to be built out downtown, but those next kind of areas like Plaza and Paseo, those need good bike connections. They don't necessarily have to be like dedicated bike lanes and stuff, but those traffic calming share kind of projects, really kind of getting people where they have an option to jump on a bicycle and go to work, or go to eat, or go to a store, and come back without every trip having to be made in a, in a car, so. I was going to mention that on this trails page, there's a small change from the printed copy that you received. There's a little bullet point at the bottom for Deep Fort Trail. That is a project that we had not had on our list, because it has already been funded, but we think the funding is incomplete. We might need a little more work on that. So, we wanted to specifically denote that, just because we think there will be continued requests for funding on that. requests for funding on that in some of our upcoming sources, so. And then, if you flip to the next one. The trails portion has had some changes as well in the prioritization. We've been re-ranking things a little bit, kind of refocusing on adjacent population to service kind of those needs, and then also things that will connect existing trails got extra points in the way we prioritize this list. So a trail that wasn't ranked very high before, that you'll see they're kind of in the middle is, is number two, which is along Barack Creek on the south side. It would connect like the South River Trails back over to the Grand Trail, and we think that'd be a really important connection. And so it like floated up the ranking as kind of an example there. Is it stuck? Yeah. I think the PowerPoint might be hung up. Oh, okay. Let, there's movement. Sorry. Technical difficulties. Something else, I think I've mentioned to you all before in our study session, but the new emphasis for our program is really safety. We're in the process of writing the city's first Vision Zero Plan to reduce traffic fatalities down to zero someday. So we've added additional safety measures onto our list. Unfortunately, even though we've seen an increase in bicycle pedestrian trips, we've also seen an increase in fatalities and serious injuries. So we want to make sure that we really emphasize the safety and that we're, we're measuring whether or not things are, are getting better or worse there. And that's it. I have available for questions, I have additional slides if you really want to get into the weeds, but it's been a long meeting, right?
How to use these?
Yeah. We, so one of the things that we do, it's a little different on our community engagement, is we try to kind of do it year-round all the time. And so, for instance, on, on this plan, we had a survey that was open for a year and a half, almost two years. But we also, we go to town hall meetings and a lot of things, and we are constantly getting feedback that we're trying to kind of incorporate what, what can we put into the next plan. As far as use in particular, we hear a lot from bike advocates that are recreational riders, but one of the things we've seen is recreational like bicycle riding tends to be kind of a gateway a little bit. A lot of people kind of start there, like, it'd be nice if I could get a ride in on my way to work as well and stuff. And so that, the demand for more like travel-oriented trails and, and bike lanes has been increasing.
The reason I ask is because I, I confess to being sort of mystified a lot of times by the, you know, painted surfaces and, you know, what is it I'm supposed to do here? Who, who really has the right-of-way? And, you know, is it my responsibility to stop here even though there's no stop sign or, or street light to make sure there's not someone coming before I turn, and just all that kind of thing? I, I, I'm not a bicyclist, and so from, from that aspect of it, I don't have any familiarity with it. And as a driver, I just, you know, it's like, oh, these are great, they're kind of pretty, you can see that they're there. And, I mean, I know enough not to drive into them when I'm driving, but, but there are times when I'm not quite sure, you know, what, what I'm supposed to do.
Yeah, that's an area that, you know, we've done some public outreach on. We have a good partner in ACOG, the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, who has Watch For Me Oklahoma, that's a good public education campaign. I think there's a, a real opportunity to do more there, kind of explaining bicycle facilities to folks, especially as we're starting to roll out something that's a little bit different even than what we've already done, like the protected bike lanes. And so I think we have an opportunity to continue to educate there. A common question we get is like, if, if I'm coming up to an intersection and a cyclist is as well, who has the right-of-way? Can I turn right in front of them, or do I have to let them go? And so we can do a little bit more to answer those questions.
It's such a shame that there's no, there's no civics education, there's no driver's education, there's no, you know, sort of easily identifiable pathway into the schools for this kind of stuff. And it would be so helpful, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
Jeff, did you?
I, I think I agree with you on the education piece, and I think we are applying for a grant, right? Or to help us with this? That's part of this, getting to zero fatalities, right?
Well, so in addition to the Watch For Me, which, you know, is a perpetual thing, and we want to keep it perpetual, yes, we have a grant for the Vision Zero Plan, and that kind of, one of the things that I, that we want that to do is to make it more, what's the word? More iPhone, like, you know, easier to understand what you're supposed to do. Intuitive, there it is. I knew it was coming. So if you have that...
I do not associate the word iPhone with intuitive.
Oh, okay. Well, unfortunately for Apple. But, but yeah, we, more striping, like, for example, the Lottie bike lane we've been talking about. It's funny how, you know, we, that is being striped right now. A lot of it, most of it is in, but it's not as, you know, I think it's intuitive, but it isn't for everybody. And so we have to go back and say, well, what else can we do? We can add delineators, for example, when you're turning, so you know, oh, do not drive here, and just make it more obvious to people. That's kind of our, one of our number-one goals. And if we can do that for bicyclists, if we can do that for people who are driving automobiles, make things more intuitive so it's more obvious, it becomes safer for everybody. So that's one of the things we'd like to do as, as part of the Vision Zero Plan, as well as other kind of more expensive things to do to intersections, for example.
Any other questions, Commissioners? And I believe we are to vote to approve the adoption of this update to, to the BikeWalk OKC plan, and thank you for the presentation. Who would like to do us the honor of making the motion?
I'll move that we approve, what is it that we're actually voting to approve?
Approving the, the resolution to adopt the update.
Approving the resolution to, there you go. That's what I move. I move the resolution to approve the update to BikeWalk OKC.
Commissioner Powers moves to approve the resolution adopting the updates to the BikeWalk OKC plan. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
You guys always win on this.
I gotta get one. Weird.
You know, I wonder if it would be possible for there to be some...
And the motion passes.
Adaptation of the, like, signaling system to let, to let a driver know that there's somebody in the path, sort of coming up behind them since the last signal, you know? Would work well downtown. Places where signals are farther apart, it might not be that helpful. But downtown especially, you know, if you knew when you pulled out onto Walker that, you know, there was somebody in that bike lane between Sheridan and, and, you know...
Yeah, kind of like, kind of like you have for the streetcar. It's got its own kind of, that would be...
If there, if there was some easy way just to know, there's somebody over there whether you're looking for them or not. That might be helpful.
Yeah, because the best we've got is just...
Let's get a pass.
Rearview mirror and, yeah. But yeah, that, that technology is, I feel like it's close because we have radar now being installed on our intersections, and it will detect cyclists.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, so, I feel like it's coming.
I think about that all the time, though, driving to work downtown of like, well, I didn't pass a, you know, cyclist this block, I'm turning right, but somebody could have just darted off the sidewalk and got in the bike lane that I didn't see, and, yeah.
Well...
Yeah, I do feel guilty for feeling grateful that not that many people ride their bikes because it, it, it makes me very nervous, you know, to think that I'm not as aware as I should be.
Well, I think that is another thing to, for us to continue to monitor with all of these investments in improving our streets, is just thinking of the ways that we can continue to integrate technology and further educate ourselves and our neighbors about how to navigate these spaces. I can tell you, Lottie specifically was mentioned because there have been some significant changes to that, and me and my neighbors have been having many discussions about the change because I wish we did have that cement barrier between the, the bike lane and the parking spaces because people are real, have been mentioning that to me as a concern because they didn't understand how to navigate it. They didn't understand why, and then they didn't understand what, what that meant. And so just that education piece really matters, really does. Okay, well, are there any additional? We have reached the end of our separate items to be heard. Are there any additional items? There are no additional items. Communications and reports, Planning Commission committees, any reports from our Planning Commission committees, Commission members, Commissioner Claire?
I will see you all in four weeks. I apologize for not being here next session. I'll be thinking of you guys.
Don't, you don't have to lie to us. Where are you going?
Asia.
That sounds awesome. It's great.
How exciting.
Well, enjoy yourself, be safe. Commissioner Powers?
No, I appreciate the help on the figuring with the Walker thing. I think it's just going to be a wonderful, just to have it settled, what's going to be there is going to be a big help. And to have it settled that it's going to be R1 is amazing, so.
That's true. And that so many neighbors are pleased is also great.
It really, really is. I mean, it, it was very thoughtfully put together plan. They did a lot, a lot of work on the front end so that it didn't have to require a lot of give-and-take, back-and-forth negotiation on, you know, at, at the adoption stage. They, it was really well thought out and well planned. Hiring an architect that backs right up to the creek, you know, a long, long time, you know, member of the neighborhood was just a huge plus, you know, somebody who really understood the issues and had lived with the property, both in good times and bad, you know? So it's going to be a good thing.
It's good. Thank you.
You should have come to the meeting. It would have done your heart good. All those people and nobody screaming.
Okay, that, that would be nice. I'm used to the contentious ones. Whenever I get invited to one, I'm always like, ooh, not sure. Usually means somebody's upset. Commissioner Meek?
I'm good.
Commissioner Privet, Commissioner Newman?
I'm good.
Commissioner Goveen?
I also apologize for my absence at the next Planning Commission meeting. I won't be here, so...
Uh-oh, you're going to get appointed to something.
You will. I'll make it my mission to appoint both of you to something.
But nothing's...
The jail committee.
Heard it. You heard it from Commissioner La Forge. Commissioner Noble. Commissioner La Forge.
I, as was mentioned, I, I do think I'm pleased by the outcome ultimately. I appreciate having a very thorough discussion about the issues around utilities and the easements and barrier, and Dust and I appreciate that perspective. I do think it's important for us to be thorough and thoughtful about these decisions. They're not easy decisions to make because we do want, we care about people having access to utilities, we care about protecting the city's liability, we care about also having effective development that meets our needs. And balancing those interests is always very challenging, but I just want to again thank our staff for the great work you do, for the respect you have, for, for just making sure our city's well taken care of. And so I appreciate that, even though we don't always agree on the right way to settle it, your efforts are appreciated, so.
Planning Department?
Just wanted to thank staff for the great work on BikeWalk OKC. It's been a, a long trail, and we're happy to have it finally come to this point where we can get it adopted. I think they'll walk out with a spring in their step, so, but they've done a great job. It's been a bigger deal than I think we all anticipated, but we're ready now. It's, it's good timing. This is what we wanted. We're ready for Maps 4 implementation. Now we're prepared for the upcoming bond, so we've got a whole list of prioritized projects. We're in really great shape for the next several years, so we're all very happy about that. And I just wanted to echo real quick the comments about the 36th project as well. I mean, those sorts of things are, are great projects. We, we love to see those. It's, it's creatively done, density well done. So, yeah, we, we will be having discussions about how we can, you know, improve our regulations to accommodate those sorts of things a little more easily. So thank you.
That's great. Municipal Counsel's Office. We kept you busy today. Citizens to be heard, all, and there's no other business. We are here...